I think if your comment is people run for public office for the money, it's the most ludicrous, uneducated comment. I ran to really to get shit done and we've gone quite a bit done in a very short time.
Hey, hey, welcome back to the deep fire podcast episode 11. I'm your host Joe fries. Please be joined today by Ryan Graham and Ticton city councillor. And a few other things, but we're gonna let him get into that. First time I ever heard about Ryan Graham, first I heard his name was somewhere around 2012, 2013. Was at the Western news and you had applied for like a permit to host a beer garden at a softball festival. And it was a big news story for some reason. And I asked her on the office and I said, I'm not from Penn Ticton. And I said, who's Ryan Graham? Everyone said, everyone knows Ryan. And so 10 years later, is that, is that still true?
Yeah, I was very fortunate to grow up in Penn Ticton. And I think when you grow up in a small community like Penn Ticton and you go through the rankings of school and and you have the same friends for the last, you know, three decades, um, you, you build relationships.
Delving into a bit of your background, you're a Ticton born and raised, you're a dad, business owner, city councillor, just give us your life story in a nutshell.
Yeah, I wasn't born in Penn Ticton, I was born in Yorkton Saskatchewan. Our family moved, uh, we were headed uh, in 1988, I was born in 1986. So in 1988, our family was leaving Prairies to go to Vancouver. We stopped here in Penn Ticton, a little pit stop, and my parents fell in love with the community. And we ended up staying. So I've been in the community since 88 and uh, I've gone through kindergarten to grade 12 in the school district 67. And uh, now, you know, I have my stepson Dominic, he's 21, he's graduated a Penn High first grad class of COVID. And now my son Jensen, uh, he just turned 11 today and, and he's going to Skull Lake Middle School, uh, starting in September.
Okay. Um, I, I don't know the story, but um, I'm told Bruce Johnson played an important part in your life. Bruce Johnson is a beloved former principal here in Penn Ticton. Um, I understand he kind of took you under his wing at one point. Can you just tell us about your relationship with Bruce?
Yeah, um, I'm very fortunate to have many teachers, staff that uh, kind of helped me get through some some difficult times growing up. My mom and my dad separated. Uh, and then my mom battled cancer through uh, elementary, junior high. And specifically high school, it was getting pretty bad. So it was a lot of ICU uh, weeks, sometimes months for my mom. So try to balance that going to social studies and then doing your extracurricular while, you know, being at the hospital and having a little brother too. It made it sometimes pretty difficult. And uh, Mr. Johnson just took me in his office one day and uh, was just straight good about it, you know, like, we're here to help you out, you know, you're very quiet about it, you put a good face on, but you know, if you need any help, support, we're here for you. Um, so yeah, things like that, um, you know, I carry with me every day. And uh, if I don't have the Johnsons, the Chris Terrises, the Russell Reeds and and I could go on, you know, the, the Miss Sizmes who are my, you know, second, they were our secretary, you know, receptionist when we were in school and now there, she's doing it for my son. So it's full circle. So I'm very fortunate to grow up here and um, and that spurred, you know, a decade of being hounded to run for council and I had other things going on and, and now it's one of those times, you know, I decided if I don't do it now, I'm never going to do it. And I might as well get in there.
Yep. Um, how do you balance, uh, find, find your balancing the old Ryan and the new Ryan? The old Ryan, I mean, um, uh, you know, the, you made a point of wearing the backwards hat in your campaign photos, um, uh, wearing, wearing shorts, uh, in the cannabis game. You ran a liquor store for a while. Um, now the new Ryan, uh, city councillor, wearing a suit and tie on your, on your, um, swearing in night with a boot in here, the whole nine yards. How, how do you balance that guy with the old guy? How do you find that balance?
It's a great question. Uh, yeah, I've never wore that shirt again. Um, so uh, I got a suit jacket I bought. I wear a black t-shirt. I put that suit jacket on once or twice a month for council. I wear that for council and then I leave it there.
Is it, is that, is it, is it you showing respect for the office? Is that, is that about it?
Hundred percent. Um, you know, it was a big, you know, kind of a joke was can't wait, you know, for you to get in there and wear your hat and, and for me, uh, um, what I wear doesn't dictate the work in which I can do. And I've been a firm believer, uh, past committees, past president of DPA, now the DP BIA and um, but I do have the respect for, you know, for that, um, you know, for, for the fact that, you know, obviously we're, you know, no hats and be very hard pressed seeing me wear a tie. Um, but yeah, I, I respect it to the point where yeah, I, I do that. And um, when I'm out doing city events and stuff, um, I'm wearing my hat because really I'm there just as a vessel just to show support and volunteer. And um, again, I, I can't reiterate enough what we do as councilmen and women like, um, and how we dictate, how we wear, what we wear. It really has nothing to do with what we can get done for the job. So I, I, I started that right here and I never went from it.
Okay, okay. Um, yeah, you're the last of three rookie city councillors we've had on the podcast. Uh, Isaac Gilbert was first, then Amelia Bulby. You and Amelia go, go way back in time, right? Um, so you like childhood friends?
Uh, not childhood friends. I, it's, it's funny. I know her as Amy Bulby, now Amelia Bulby. Uh, I went, uh, we, I was in high school with Amy. So she was grade 11, I was grade 12, uh, and then I graduated. So I had one year with Amy in school. Um, I've actually known uh, councillor Watt for over a decade. Um, I've known Helena for some time here or there. Um, James Miller, I've known for over a decade. Um, Isaac, I met him uh, just through the campaign, campaigning and we didn't start good. Uh, but now, um, I've got a ton of respect for, for councillor Gilbert. Um, he's incredibly educated. Uh, he, he lives for policy, he lives for procedure. And uh, I think the city of Penn Ticton is very, very lucky to have him on as a councillor. And uh, for me, you know, I've always said, you know, for running for council, I always have the respect for that. And once you're in there, you know, if you're in there for the right reasons, I have the, I always respect whoever runs and I, you know, my short time as a councillor. Um, the disrespect and the comments and what we have to deal with, um, it's just so far from the truth. And, and, and to your point of the old Ryan to the new Ryan, well, the old Ryan would be like, okay, well, you said this, I'm going to say this. And now new, new Ryan as a, as a councillor, um, I don't get into weeds on social media. Um, you know, I don't care about the 72 people online that have some things to say. I represent 36,000. And so for me, I stay focused at the task at hand. And uh, I think what this council has accomplished in its first nine months together, uh, is pretty incredible. Uh, two RCMP, four more firefighters. The strongest language with the provincial decriminalization with our safe spaces by law, our reinforcement and reinvestment into our bylaw. Our bylaws is world-class. Uh, we've gone to a few conferences throughout the province and uh, when you've got the mayor of Vancouver and other mayors of bigger municipalities talking about your bylaw and, and the team there, I think we've got something to work with. And uh, I'm incredibly proud of our, of our senior staff. And again, old Ryan had already known these relationships through past hats of DPA and whatnot. And so now once you get through the campaign and all that rhetoric, you basically are like avatar and you're getting plugged in.
Yeah.
And now you're really seeing what goes on. And what you see in the click and bait headlines are here or there in the media or the papers i- is not the reality of like, of, of what's going on. And I think, you know, again, to nine months, you get downloaded, what's coming, what's happened, what could potentially coming. And I think we've, we've done a really good job kind of you know, finding whose strengths or what and, and finding that balance. And again, you know, healthy debate is good debate. And uh, we've had some really great, healthy debate. Uh, councillor Conance and councillor Gilbert um, are the two greatest examples. They have great debate and then super kosher about it, super appreciative of it. And then we move on, right? So, um, we're not all going to be seven, seven zip unanimous votes, but should it always be six, one? Probably not. So who knows, right? I'm sure, I'm sure eventually we will find balance.
Yeah. Uh, okay. I want to unpack a couple of things there. Um, Amelia and Isaac, I've asked both them if they had ambitions to run, um, for higher levels of political office because there's rumblings about them. I've never heard rumblings about you potentially, uh, but are you interested in going further in politics?
Yeah. So let me categorically be very clear on this one here. Um, I don't even represent a party. I, I, I've had many different groups reach out. Um, I'm a municipal man. I ran to be a councillor of Penn Ticton, British Columbia. I didn't run to be a councillor from Penn Ticton for two years, three years, four years. And then piece out and try to be uh, some politician. Um, I don't fit that mold. I'm not going to be in that mold. Um, I ran for council because I want to get some things done. I want to re-strike some balance and I want to stir it up a little bit.
Yep.
And uh, I think we've done that. I think this new council, um, and not only just the young rookies of it. Um, but I think council will realize this pace is going to be quicker than the last council.
Yep.
Um, we're not going to sit idle. We want to get things done. Um, so to your question, I have no ambition on the world. I don't even know what political party I would fall in. Um, so, um, you know, James Miller asked me 10 years ago, when I just become president of DPA. And he had said, you know, the natural progression. I told him then, right then, I had no inclination, didn't want to. And I stayed true to that. I, I could have run in the last two uh, elections and uh, not arrogance or pomplessness, just I always felt, and we've joked about, I've always felt I'd get the 3200 benchmark to get in. And uh, now I'm in a time and place in my life where I could dedicate the time and really get in there. So.
Have you, uh, have, have you thought about, uh, running for a second term? Have you given any thought to that and?
I think, yeah, it's a great question. I think it's just so fresh though. I think, you know, for me, I want a full year. I want like 12 months. Um, it's a roller coaster. I have, I have highs and lows, um, all the time with council. Um, not my council colleagues, but um, really this perceived like, you know, they're in it for the money. Um, I, I've actually like screenshotted our pathetic paychecks and sent it to some heroes and said, like, I take the pay decrease. Doing what I'm doing. Um, I didn't do it for the money. I think if your comment is people run for public office for the money. It's the most ludicrous, uneducated comment. Um, and there's quite a few of them, but I mean, um, that one there gets me all the time. Um, I ran to, to really, you know, to get shit done. And so uh, we've gone quite a bit done in a very short time. You asked me two years from now, um, I would say if I had to say today, no, this will be a one and done based off, you get absolutely annihilated online with uneducated comments. And um, really it's like, well, I didn't see you run. I, I didn't see any emails from you. I've never seen you at a city council meeting, right? So there's this disconnect from, you know, the click and bait to the online social media platforms to where, uh, you know, things are being talked about and you know, you're seeing these things. It's like, well, wait a minute, I'm a city councillor. We haven't even talked about this yet. So how could this even be printed in a, you know, but I mean, that's the reality of the world we're in right now. So, um, it's a thankless job, one that, uh, again, we're not here to get pat on the back. Um, again, it's, it's a thankless job, but I mean, I have all the respect in the world to my six fellow councillors and our mayor, um, anyone that wants to run in the upcoming, um, election based in three years from now, um, do it. I, I mean, for me, it was, it was shit or get off the pot, right? It's, it's easy to talk, talk, talk. But for me, I was like, okay, I'm getting off the sidelines. And I think it's really going to spur that conversation now. Okay, Ryan did it. Um, it's a huge learning, learning curve. And I was pretty educated on this. I, I had done my time as, you know, president of the DPA. Um, felt I was pretty educated on like the rumblings of how a municipality runs. Um, let me tell you, you all have no idea. Um, you have no idea until you get put in that seat and you get downloaded, you know, you run 197 million dollar a year business, right? So it's like, right? So for us, it's, you know, the process in which how are we getting the information? How are we getting downloaded everything? And then the process to, you know, you get your budget and then, you know, so it's finding that balance of like, you know, my first council meeting, uh, councillor Conan said brought, you know, a really cool motion about the correctional facility. And back to old Ryan, I just made a simple, well, the warden's 35 minutes down the street. Let's, let's invite her. Let's, let's make a call. Well, I didn't know that statement is now, well, Ryan, you're bringing a motion forward, right? So that's a learning curve, right? So you've got a veteran like Campbell Watt on his third term, one motion. And now you got councillor Graham, first council meeting, first motion, right? And so, um, it just shows, you know, it's good to have those veterans. And um, I think for, you know, councillor Gilbert and councillor Bulby and myself, um, you know, we are the rookies, you know, we got a rookie mayor and uh, and councillor Conan, she's a rookie. Sometimes then she's a veteran, right? She gets to put her foot in, in both aspects of which is nice. And so we really look to them to kind of like, you know, help us out and stuff. And, um, ultimately, um, you know, we all have our points of what we want to get accomplished. And I think, you know, if we all do it articulately, and if we do it respectfully, we should have a phenomenal four years. I think the first nine months speaks for itself.
Okay. So short answer there is you've not yet decided if you'll, if you're not ruling out another term, but you're not decided yet.
Um,
I want to get you on the record here because, because someone's going to, you know, going to go back and say, what did he say?
On the record, I will not rerun for council.
Okay. You heard it here first. Uh, okay. Um, I, for the people who are watching, watching the video version of this, I was probably going to jump into our skateboarding topic now to explain the dude who just came between us and removed this red cooler. Ryan and I are sitting under a, a little canopy. This is what's, uh, what is the shade at the Penn Ticton Riverside Youth Skate Park? This is what passes for shade here. There's a, there's a skate park ambassador who, who looks after people, um, in case there's people get too hot or need help. Um, but Ryan, uh, was among the, like group of councillors who led the drive. They get some lights here, water, washrooms, the whole nine yards. So that's kind of why we picked this, uh, I picked this venue. Um, Ryan, uh, tell us what, what we can expect to see here and when.
Yeah. So, um, I did a few videos during the campaign and one was here at the skate park and the skate park is the third largest in the province. Um, it's an incredible asset. And the, to get it to build, uh, kudos to that council and staff of the time. Couple of things were obviously missed, lights and water. So currently there's no light in here at this facility. So, um, you know, I spoke out pretty, pretty adamant right off the get go, striking balance and, and balance to me is, is um, hockey wants for nothing. There's other organizations that, um, beg and plead. And so for us, it's time to shoot your shot. And, and really this was an asset in this community that, uh, a simple re, small investment is, is allowing this facility to operate nine months a year. More importantly, it's, it's a facility that caters anywhere from three, four-year-olds to our seniors. And it's a facility that is low cost in a community where a lot of things cost money. And for me, I look at this because I'm down here so much and I just one day was like, it's criminal. We don't have lights. We've got a basketball court next door, next to it as well. And I mean, for us, our youth are our next leaders. And if we don't protect them and if we don't reinvest in the youth, um, what are we really doing? So, um, I brought it forward and I, I reached out to all my council. I sat, you know, individually down and just told them the spiel of what I wanted to do. And I thought collectively, hey, if we could do a full council wanted to do it, wicked. If not, that's fine. I, I can go at this, you know, and then try to get the four votes and uh, right away councillor Gilbert got on board, which is great. That's his realm, his writing. And uh, I said, you write it up, I'll speak it. And then, uh, and then councillor Bulby jumped on too. And, and she wanted to get on board. And uh, for us, it wasn't a, like a youth movement on council trying to uh, go against like the seniors, let's say on the, on the senior team there. It was more or less like we, we just got the 7.7 million. And you know, there's some really good causes where that money is going to go. And let's just earmark that money now for this facility. And um, I mean, we've got a water fountain on Main Street, uh, in front of a pawn shop. But we don't have water down at the skate park and at the basketball court.
Yeah.
Um, you go to other facilities, there's shade and there's tenting. And, and again, that goes to that wanting for nothing. And here we've got the poles and everything set up, but we don't actually have the park. So we're just, uh, and it's no knock to staff or senior staff. Like again, it's a, it's a community that's got a lot of moving pieces. So, but for me, being outspoken, it's like people and organizations and projects within this community have been forgotten. Well, I'm that vessel. And I think that was my whole, you know, campaign was I am just the common folk, right? I'm, I'm, I'm not a multimillionaire. I'm, I'm a renter. Me and my wife work hard and, and then we want to get back to this community. And I, and that came kind of full circle to why I decided finally I was going to run. And it was very last minute. I decided Monday I was running. I asked my wife on Wednesday if I could run and I'm fist pumping Angie Carlson on Friday with my papers. So um, we had our meet, our pay, our signs out two weeks later and for, you know, we didn't do the calling and we didn't knock on doors. We, we knew organically we were there. But it was important to just do the forums and really listen, you know, to what people have to say. And and uh, and I think that's the thing is like, people want to be heard and listened to. And, and that's, that's my biggest thing. And I, I noticed right away, my first month elected is, um, you get an email, I get back right away. And, and the, the, the over, overwhelming response was it's incredible how fast you got back to me. And uh, I said, oh, well, you know, I'm new councillor and I think that's a big part of the gig. And you know, quote unquote, I have emailed past councillors, four years, no response. It took you 44 minutes, right? So again, it ties into this new, this new council, um, they're about that action, right? And I think, I think once, you know, our four years are up, um, people, people will be impressed.
You still have a 44 minute response rate to emails?
Yeah. I, I mean, it's a cellular phone. You have it on, it beats. There's email, you respond. Uh, it's, it's not a, it's not a crazy thing. People reach out. Uh, I've sat, I've sat with like a dozen or so people at blends for coffees and different groups that have, you know, been frustrated or, or wanted to speak. And um, I'm a pretty accessible guy. Right? So for me, that's a big part of it is I don't hide behind a keyboard. I don't hide behind some office. I'm, I'm pretty well obtainable.
Okay. Um, just to close off, uh, talking about skate park. So what, what is now in the plans? There's going to be light posts going up. Um, proper shade and there's a new set of washrooms nearby. So that's it, right?
Yeah, absolutely. So with, um, with that 7.7 million the city received, um, we've earmarked money to fully light the skate park, um, as well as, uh, the basketball court. Um, it's no incurred cost. Um, it actually worked out really well. The planners, um, like, hey, we can get lighting on basketball court too. So obviously let's do it. Um, with our weather, it's a nine month a year opportunity for this thing to get used, right? Um, washrooms are great. Um, you know, the washroom battle right now, you know, we spend close to half a million a year maintaining our washrooms. And for us, it's very frustrating as parents that we bring our kids down and there's no washroom or tourists have come down to, to go to the new skate, skate, uh, facility next to Gyro, but the washrooms are closed. And, and I send the emails like, hey, as a dad, I am more frustrated than you. Um, trust me. Um, so when you hear, you know, the comments, oh, like, you know, they don't even have washrooms open. It's like, well, at what cost? Right? We, we, we can employ people to stand at these washrooms 24 hours a day, seven days a week. People would like that. But then when you hit them with, okay, well, that would, this would be the hypothetical tax increase. Oh, no, no, no. So it's that balance, right? Of service and taxes. And that comes down to being really plugged in and really seeing what goes on. And um, to me, the, the parking meters was a, is a great example, right? It's a, you know, we did a small little reprieve unanimous decision with all council and, um, you know, it cost the taxpayers 200,000.
Um, this is for background, people who don't know, um, uh, it was a, a proposal before by councillor Graham. Uh, it was December, a couple of months, you can tell us, but, uh, to remove free parking, uh, start free parking downtown Penn Ticton to spur business. Um, just tell us about, tell us, that's the background.
Yeah. So, no, absolutely. And so parking has been a contentious issue for decades. Um, when I, my time as president of DPA, it's all we dealt with. And um, there was a Facebook post, um, by business owner, uh, in the, in the main street. And it was kind of just the camel that broke the back type scenario where I was like, you know what? Uh, I'm in a position now where I can spring a motion forward and, and maybe we get something done today. And, um, I basically, I emailed Angie Carlson, went back for the few times. It was like my first ever like motion. And um, yeah, so I just wanted a small reprieve. And I think, uh, the business community, um, I think it's both for itself. Um, is paid parking going away forever? Absolutely not. It's a million dollar a year comes into the city. But I think that small reprieve just showed that this council and mayor, we're here in this community. And I think there are opportunities for us to really look at things and say, hey, we can change the way this is operated. And I think, I think with staff, our senior staff and, and council, I think we're finding that balance of like, yeah, you've done it this way for this long, but maybe it's time to look at a new path. And I think, um, I think the paid parking, uh, it went over incredibly well. And it just showed, hey, we hear you. And, and that's my thing is like, this community is awesome. And uh, you know, we are not immune to what's going on in North America. Um, but I mean, for our community here in Penn Ticton, um, if we can just try to continually find that balance, you know, between our, our seniors and our working and our young parents and our college university kids. We want this community, uh, is to be as viable as we can.
It's time to remind you that season one of the deep prior podcast is presented by the South Okanagan Event Center. For complete event information and tickets, visit valleyfirsttics.com. As I'm recording this on July 1st, upcoming shows include TLC and Shaggy Hot Summer Nights Tour on July 15th. Ryan Adams coming up on September 11th, the Vancouver Canucks Young Stars Tournament, which is also great hockey. And should be a bunch of these rap hits in there this year. That's coming up September 15th to 18th. And September 22nd, Bonnie Raitt, the special guest Royal Wood. Again, for more information or tickets, visit valleyfirsttics.com. And now back to the show. A common theme on this, uh, this season has been the Lakelake bike route. Um, Matt Hawkins in episode three talked about it. Uh, Amelia, uh, boldly brought it up in her episode and, and, and Ryan's name came up. Um, so I, I wanted to get also for the record here. What was your stance on the Lakelake bike route prior to the election, um, after the election and then after budget time? Uh, we'll get into the, there was an incident at budget time. We're going to get to the bottom of that as well. But, um, where have you stood on bike lane, bike lanes to date and now?
Yeah. Great question. So, um, here we go for all your radicals with the bike rate. The concept came in 2012, um, triple A rating, all ages and abilities. Um, my stance on the bike route through the forums, whether it been the Penn Ticton Herald or the Western was the bike route is 80% finished, let's get it done.
Yeah.
More importantly, it's done. Now let's get serious about fixing it. On Martin Street with the barriers and the signs, but a lot of that on the backend, a lot of that is provincial too. So it's not like this new council can come in and say, you know what, staff? Bike lane, get rid of the cement barriers. You get rid of the cement barriers. Now it's not a triple A rated bike lane. You have to give back all the grants. So my stance is as follows. I categorically said I wanted to get these bike lanes finished. Then I wanted to get to the root of what's causing the issues. And really, when you break it down to it, um, it's a few things. It's the barriers, it's the signs on Martin Street. It's the fact that there wasn't a public referendum, which I agree. You know, we could have had water slides here.
Yep.
And we had a big group come out and basically stop that. Well, I didn't see them during this whole bike lane debacle. So again, bike lanes and, and the bike pass are here. The Atkinson self-man completes it. And then we move on. I mean, it's absolutely crazy. On social media, um, again, the 72 people, um, it's bike lanes, bike lanes, bike lanes. And I mean, we have so much other more important things going on right now in this community. Um, you know, our housing, our unhoused, our, we have just, there's a list of about 250,000 things and the bike lane is 2,051. Like it is just, to me, they're done, they're here. Now it's important and I, and I can tell you where the, our senior staff are working on that right now with Matt Hopkins and that group, right? They get it too. That Martin Street, it needs to be fixed. And uh, again, they're working on that. And if I could, uh, get rid of bike lanes today and poof magically want it back to, you know, to, you know, whatever, I would, but I don't have that ability. So now I have to move on with my life. And my message to the people out there and, you know, the few that will watch this that are the bike lane, you know, crazies is, uh, it's time to move on. You know, uh, bike lanes are here. Uh, it's time for us to move on. This city has a lot of cool things happening behind the scenes and we're working incredibly hard, uh, for this community. So I, I don't really entertain the whole bike lane thing anymore. Um,
Let me ask you just one last question then about bike lanes. And I'm only asking, I'm asking you this because it seemed like your integrity was actually called into question. And it was at the budget votes in March. Um, there was a four, three vote to pause the last leg of the bike route. You were the deciding vote. Um, the next day you brought a motion to redo the vote. You said you, you, you weren't, you weren't, um, quite familiar with what you're voting on was a mistake.
Absolutely.
Uh, councillor Miller asked you some very pointed questions about who you talked to in the in-between. And there was, it was like an insinuation that someone had got to you. That's the way I read it. But what, okay. So take us through what happened.
Yeah. Yeah. So we go back to like old ride, new ride. So for me, um, I'm a human being and people make mistakes. So, and councillor Miller, uh, he, he did make a few comments and uh, here, here's the rebuttals of the comments. Ready? I made a simple mistake during budget, uh, because councillor Miller never speaks, right? He's just a vessel for a few people. And so when, uh, when I looked at the 1.7 million in bike group, bike lanes and, and James speaking, I insinuated that they wanted to spend another 1.7 million on new bike lanes. That's why I voted against it. The moment we, that council meeting ended, we went into our back room and right away, councillor Gilbert said, not that I care, but just curious what happened from December. When I went with, I want to get it done. Cause that's been my stance since forums, Harold, Western papers.
Yep.
To now you don't wanna get it done. The moment I had realized I had made a mistake, I had then contacted um, all of my council.
Yeah.
Minus one of them.
Yeah.
Uh, because him or her, I don't even know why they're there. Um, so I didn't message that individual. Um, so I right away uh, messaged all my council, had conversations with them right then, that day. Said I made a simple mistake, um, and I'm going to own that mistake. Um, so the next day, um, we went and did the vote again and, and I spoke to it. Um, I owned it. Um, a few people questioned, questioned my integrity that I'd been paid off and um, this, that and the other thing. And um, really, um, I didn't take it much care and soul. I know what I'm about. And uh, um, so yeah, I just uh, I stay, I stayed the course with it. And so I made a very simple mistake during budget and um, I think our whole budget thing, if you look at it, it was the latest budget ever.
Yeah.
Seemed to, in my humble opinion, after this budget, we've now changed policy.
Yeah.
Uh, so next, you know, going into our next budget, it, it's gonna be a lot, uh, a lot, not easier, but it's gonna be a lot more time invested into it. Um, so yeah, it was just a simple little mistake. And I owned it, right? And I think, I think that's about being a leader and, and people were like shocked. They're like, man, like, they killed it. Like, I made a simple mistake. I, I then went through the, the policy, but you know, procedures of how I should handle this mistake. And then uh, and then I delivered that. And so uh, to councillor Miller's point, um, I, I don't get into the weeds with comments like that. I mean, for me, it's, um, it was a pretty straightforward mistake. Um, so yeah, you know, we're, we've moved on from that. Um, uh, you know, I went to conferences and we had conversations about it. And everyone's like, no, dude, you killed it, right? Like you made a simple mistake. You owned it. And, and for me, you know, the social media was going crazy. And for me, I could have, I could have suppressed the comments.
Yeah.
I could have removed, I could have deleted, I could have booted people off of the Facebook pages I moderate.
Yeah.
I didn't remove, deflect or delete anything.
Yeah.
I owned it. And I think that just shows you my character. Um, I, I fucked up. And uh, I made a simple mistake and we're allowed to make mistakes. We're human beings, right? And I think, you know, it comes back to this online social media.
Yeah.
You know, you have people ask, oh, we can't wait to hear this council. We've been elected thirty-six days. Do you hear yourself, right? I mean, some of the time, you know, you wanna get into it. I don't know. I let Amelia do her thing, right? And you know, she likes to get in on that.
Yeah.
Right? And for me, old Brian, when type, hey, talk to me and like, let's have a conversation, right? And so I think uh, uh, and I had more people actually come up to me if we're at Neighborhood or, you know, wherever we may be. More people come to say, hey man, just good job on like owning it and moving on, right? And so again, um, uh, you know, it's like, we've had things now in camera, which we can't speak about, that other people have made mistakes and I've made the comment like, hey, mistakes happen, right? So it's a laughable, teachable moment, I think. And that's what I wanted it to be, right? It wasn't a, wasn't any collusion and, and uh, I'm not a biker, right? So it's like, I don't know, I have no skin in this game of race. Like, I don't care, you know, if you pro bike, don't bike, I don't care, right? I teach their own. And so uh, for me, I'm just uh, I'm focused, I'm focused working with interior health right now. I'm focused on getting sure we have winter shelters. I'm focused on the crime. I'm focused on the opiate crisis in our community. Like the important things while I ran.
Yeah.
The tough things that I ran for, which some people get nervous to dip their toe in, I'm swimming in that.
Yeah.
I'm holding interior health accountable. I'm roughly like, that's why I ran for council.
Yeah.
I didn't run to go to events to have sandwich with a diet ginger ale and take selfies. That is not what councillor Graham's about, at all.
Uh, okay. So I, uh, let's get, let's get into those two issues. I wanna, wanna touch on uh, on a couple of big issues here, um, crime, et cetera, and housing, of course. Um, Ryan, uh, after the uh, what I mentioned, twenty thirteen, the, the softball beer garden, whatever it was, uh, around twenty eighteen or so, you were the president of the downtown Penitent Business Association. And you were very forceful about the deteriorating state of downtown crime, et cetera. You were one of the first voices to really identify this.
Yeah.
And call for action. So um, all these years later, now you're in a position to do something about it. Um, what are your thoughts now?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's great. And, and I love that you bring that up because um, back to like, you know, some people ca- uh, talking about my character, I'd send them like, like decade old clips of me like chirping the superintendent, right? Like, so for me, here it is. We have one of the weakest superintendents uh, of the RCMP, um, for a long time here. And, and it really, it really evolved to the culture which we had downtown.
Yeah.
Um, I've been in downtown fifteen years. And so when I was president of the DPA, we were banging our heads against the wall. Um, we were getting these.
I'm not gonna, I, I'm not gonna name names cause I'm, I'm cautious, but um, it wasn't, it's not the superintendent. It's a superintendent Brian Hunter's predecessor we're talking to.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I've worked for uh, uh, as my time as councillor, uh, Brian Hunter's been our superintendent. And I can tell you, awesome.
Okay.
The, the man gets it. He's outspoken and he wants to get into like the trenches where I am right now. And so I can work with that.
Okay.
Um, the old superintendent, it was butterfly lollipop ideas and, and we were getting, you know, and it's true. And so we're seeing these patterns and these statistics and it's all coming from the Naimo Square. So I made a simple comment at a board meeting. I said, well, how many tickets have you written in the last year?
Yeah.
Well, I already know the answer. It's zero.
Yeah.
You're creating this culture.
Yeah.
And, and he deflected it. So as a board, we decided, well, maybe we should ask to speak in front of council.
Yeah.
And it didn't necessarily have to be me, but it was unanimous that I would speak. And so I went in front of the council mayor at the time and superintendent and, and uh, another corporal was with him and I, I simply just speak the facts and it's hard to debate uh, or, or deflect from facts. And you know, they were rolling their eyes and, and like, basically it was one of my best tongue lashings, right? And it really got the ball rolling and, and brings us to today, you know? When you have different groups and different Facebook groups saying, oh, you know, these councillors have done nothing. I take great offense to that.
Yeah.
Um, I don't toot my own horn. I'm, I'm, I'm a big guy, but I like to live in the shadows.
Yeah.
Um, I, I go to war every day for my community. Um, the downtown I have protected. During that old uh, superintendent, I, I was getting calls from property owners, business owners to come and deal with problems because the cops just weren't coming anymore. And this new culture with the RCMP under Brian Hunter, um, I can tell you, it's just, it's just a, it's a better culture. They, these officers, they feel appreciative and, and leadership starts at the top. So um, my first ever meeting with Brian Hunter, I think ended with Matt, we're gonna do some cool shit together, right? And so uh, I've been incredibly outspoken and, and I mean, it, it ties into why I finally ran is, is we got problems and it takes true leaders and leadership to me is, is not events and, and selfies and help. Leadership to me is, okay, I wanna sit with different boards, different groups, different, you know, agencies and really get to work.
Yeah.
And, and you know, uh, great examples are shelters.
Yeah.
Fundamental need for our shelters, but there's no support.
Yeah.
Uh, no better example of those, you know, four or five big nonprofits collaborated, like collectively coming together.
Yeah.
And saying, nope, interior health, we're not running your shelters. That is a huge piece of their overall pie to their funding. So for them to walk away from that kind of money, just shows that there are problems. And uh, and to councillor Gilbert's credit, uh, down at our first conference, um, we started chatting. He went in front, gave a really passionate speech. And out of that, um, we had about four or five communities, uh, sick moose, Kamloops, sit with councillor Gilbert. And, and really start working on interior health. And, and that's the plan. It's like, hey, um, it's all coming, it's July now, but winter's coming.
Yeah.
And we had this conversation at the hospital about five months ago. We said, okay, well, winter, I, you know, I said, I don't wanna sound, I'm not trying to come off, you know, like a jerk here, but winter comes every year and every year shelters are more and more a disaster. So where are we today, right? So what I'll do first council meeting in August is my motion will be like, I want our senior staff to reach out to your health and give us a progress report and how we're looking for shelters right now.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, so that to me is what I, is what we should be concentrating on, right? And then back to the whole bike lane thing. It's like, that's done.
Yeah.
See you later. I got way more important stuff to deal with right now.
So, okay. Um, so let me maybe sum up the question this way. You and I, before you were elected, you know, we often talked about how we were both dads. We live in this community. We love this community. We care for it. So um, how do you feel uh, as a dad with your kids in this community today versus five years ago? Like, how do you feel about their future, their safety?
So it's gonna sound radical. The downtown's never been safer. And I, and I know, I know that seems radical. And I know, I know we're seeing open drug use. And um, I wanna make sure everyone listens very carefully. The province of British Columbia decriminalized two point five grams of possession. So that means yes, they can legally smoke, inject those drugs in public places. Now for us, we have created again, the most extensive public safe bylaw in the province where other communities and towns want it.
Yeah.
Um, but that is the, as a father, the unfortunate reality of our problems right now. As a councillor, um, okay, how do we mitigate our youth and our kids being so publicly open to that?
Yeah.
Um, and, and I will, I will fight that battle um, until the ship goes down. And you know, we are dads and I think it's all about educating our kids, right? And so for my little man, um, he understands, you know, um, the unhoused and homeless and, and he understands um, that, you know, that girl, you know, sleeping under the bridge or that gentleman eating food out of a dumpster, like, they don't want that, right? And the problem is they're in that drug psychosis that they don't even know anymore what's going on. And so until the province gets serious with legislation to allow, you know, the parameters of helping these individuals.
Yeah.
Um, we, we have to, we have to be in this battle together. And I mean, it's, it's right now a losing one. And I mean, it, it, we don't stand a chance if the province doesn't step up. And so for us, um, I think we got some councillors that understand that. And, and I think, I think come August, September, there are probably some big things coming out of some motions.
Okay. Um, the safe, the safe public spaces by law, it only, it limits consumption of drugs to safe consumption sites. So suffice to say, you feel like Penitent's a, a better place for families than it was five years ago?
I mean, I mean, yes.
Yeah.
We're still uh, four and a half by nine kilometer box that is Penitent, right? And I mean, we are not immune to what's going on in North America or Washington or down in Oregon or San Francisco. I mean, yeah, we're Penitent, but I mean, we're not immune to what's going on in North America. So I think once people understand that and actually like educate themselves, they will start to really realize, okay, yes, we have that same big city issues here.
Yeah.
How we deal with those issues and, and again, sometimes gets frustrated is like, you gotta get into the weeds. Like you gotta get in to it and, and really have conversations. And I mean, that's been my frustration with interior health and other groups. It's like, we keep asking to sit with you guys to get to work.
Yeah.
And it's like, you don't want to.
Yeah.
So you're showing me like one thing to where your actions are speaking an entirely different one. So um, I think, yeah, our community is safe. We've got a ton of petty crime. Ninety percent of our petty crime is opiate driven crime. It's they're stealing your bike. They're stealing your barbecue. They're stealing your Christmas lights. They're stealing whatever they can to get that point five of whatever that drug is. And that's unfortunate that that is the cycle in which they're in, right? And I mean, yeah, it sucks. No one wants their stuff broken. No one wants their windows smashed, nor as a councillor or a dad, as a business guy or just a good human being, do, do we want that to happen to anyone, right? So um, but we're working on it. I mean, our community and our council, like, we are working incredibly hard behind the scenes. And I mean, the safe spaces by law speaks for itself.
Okay.
It took a, it took an incredible amount of work by our senior staff. And it took an incredible amount for this council mayor to, to stand there knowing that there was a little opposition, you know, from some nonprofits. But the pros far outweighed the cons and we unanimously passed that. So I'm incredibly proud of that council.
Okay. Uh, another massive issue here in Penitent, and we've touched on it in this podcast, is housing. Um, uh, predicting this, well, in Penitent, houses are being built faster than expected. Our place is growing faster than expected. Not gonna get into that, but I'm gonna ask you for hot takes on three um, big developments that are kind of in the weeds. Now, um, understanding that these are all various forms of public process, so some of, some of you might not mule the comment on, but number one, um, Spiller Road has been in going for a while. It's anywhere from one hundred to three hundred units um, near on the northeast uh, edge of town. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, my thoughts on that is uh, um, pretty outspoken group on both sides. I've allowed both groups to kind of say their piece on it. And now I'll just wait until we get to the final things where it comes forward to council.
Okay. Um, Strike uh, Developments has proposed something like fifteen hundred housing units and a whole bunch of other buildings on Government Street across from the hospital. Again, this is, I think, uh, for public consultations, you gotta be careful, but initial reaction to something like that?
Initial reaction, I think uh, it's an incredible, the incredible potential of that, um, speaks for itself. Um, it's not like a broken record when I say balance. We wanna make sure we do this with some balance and we wanna make sure uh, we're incorporating uh, dear, uh, talking with the industrial community. Obviously, we don't wanna take from our industrial land. Um, but that specific site has seen three businesses go bankrupt. Um, it, it has, it's been for sale for some time. Um, these developers have purchased it. Uh, I believe they're, they're paying in a copious amount per day and uh, and so for me, it just shows the legitimacy of it. And um, they've chosen Penitent and it has gone to public consultation. So um, to add that kind of stock, twelve to fifteen hundred units over a decade and uh, um, with how our community is designed and, and really their price points is something I think that can't be overlooked. I mean, um, this, this community ultimately will say yea or nay. And I think for me, uh, I just, I always go into everything with an open mind. And then I think you have to, you can't, you can't go into it with a preconceived notion of I'm going with this. And, and uh, that's why I love the, the actual public consultation, right? Is cause you get people that have done their due diligence and have done their research. And so uh, um, we'll see what comes out of it. Um, to each their own.
Okay. Um, last one, and speaking of big city um, problems, BC Housing has unveiled a proposal for something like five to six hundred units of social housing on south, south main street. Fellow councillor Amelia Bulby used the word ghetto on this uh, podcast to describe it. Curious about your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I definitely wouldn't use the word ghetto. I think that's another proposed development that's adding stock to this community. I think another big piece of this potential development is this is not low barrier or a shelter facility. Uh, this is a six to nine hundred potential development for working class. Um, you know, the presentation they gave had all different groups living uh, within them. Um, I think again, we need housing and we need to do it properly. I think if you look at the history of BC housing, province and past, you know, mayor council. Um, I think it goes without saying, my small time as a councillor, there was still a little bit of bitter feeling. Um, at the BC housing, uh, housing conference, um, I think, I think over a couple of laughs, we need some handshakes and a few hugs. I think I accomplished kind of saying, hey, let's hit the refresh.
Yeah.
Um, I want the public to get educated on that. I, I think BC housing too, um, it's gotta be a two-way street and, and we want in this community. Uh, but we, we have a few expectations on how, how we want this rolled out and uh, you know, I think whatever it is, whether it's BC housing or developers here in this community, like um, this is a councillor mayor to, to come now forward because we need to build stock and we have to do it uh, correctly and we have to move within the OCP and, and at that balance, but um, we gotta build. So now do I think we can fit nine hundred units down there? I don't believe we can. Um, I think BC housing really needs to look at the scope of this project. And I think they need to look at the scope of how many people live in Kelowna and what their biggest facility is there.
Yeah.
How many people live in Kamloops and what's the biggest facility there, right? The proposed facility here is, is about six and a half times. Uh, I, I believe Kelowna's biggest BC housing thing is a hundred and twelve units.
Wow.
So I mean, why Penitent is my first question.
Yeah.
Why Penitent? Like, that's my questioning, right? Now again, um, those three motels um, have turned into a disaster.
Yeah.
And so um, it'd be nice to see something happen next. So we'll see, we'll see what the city and, and what this community wants to do again. Um, I go into it open-minded until the last moment. I like to hear both sides and, and I think, um, I think that's the best way to go into these things. It's like, hey, you know, I was leaning this way, but after this, it's hard to dispute, right? I think that's sometimes where, where you really gotta, you know, you gotta really get into it and really open your mind and listen to both sides.
Yeah. Um, okay. Uh, two, two questions left. Uh, you are the managing partner of Blue Water Cannabis, which has retail outlets in Penitent and Oliver. Um, and I'm wondering how that, is there a stigma that's still attached to cannabis? It's a, it's a legitimate business. It's licensed like anything else, but is there stigma still attached to it? With say, the old school politicians you run into? Or are they like, hey man, cool stuff. Can you hook me up? Is there, what, how's it go?
Uh, no, it's, yeah, it's a great question. So I transitioned from liquor, uh, liquor and wine, which is a controlled substance to cannabis. And, and we were, you know, so our Oliver location was the sixth store open, first six store was in the province, right? So it's, we've been in it since day one, right? So this October represents our fourth year and uh, and so, yeah, I guess, you know, to your point of being a politician, you know, my literature and my hat were backwards, right? Uh, I'm in the cannabis game, right? So um, I've had many conversations, many will come up to, to the mayor and say, where's Ryan? That guy that wore the baseball cap. I wanna talk to that guy. And I, you know, I sit with them and, you know, And I, you know, I sit with them and they'll say, well, why? I said, I said, I'm not gonna change who I am.
Yeah.
I, I grew up here. I'm a, I'm a black shirt, pan, uh shorts and a ball cap guy.
Yeah.
And, and the hat's always backwards. So I'm not gonna change my persona.
Yeah.
And, and wear some goofy stuff.
Yeah.
Right? And, and put some literature up, right? And even when I sat with, you know, other candidates that were running and, you know, they're like, well, you're gonna have to change the way you dress. I said, well, you need to first get in. Don't worry about me. Right? Like I'll, I'll be okay, right? And so um I had other conversations. So to your thing, you know, cannabis has been around for a long time. Um the stigma is certainly gone now.
Yeah.
Um there's a place for cannabis. Um I am not a daily user, you know, obviously I'm busy during the week being a dad and a business guy. And, and you know, so um but I mean, yeah, like there is no different than being uh maybe let's say a, a mayor of Pennington and owning a liquor store.
Yeah.
Right? So if you own a liquor store, that is one of the highest grossing stores in town. And you're the mayor, I, you know, calling me crazy, right? So yeah, the stigma certainly it's not there anymore uh and it's been a wild ride. So I, I'm incredibly proud to represent the cannabis community. And uh um being the first elected uh city councillor in the province to uh being a cannabis guy is kind of cool too. And um but yeah, no, we're just, we're just gonna keep staying in our lane.
Okay, um last question, um we're sorry, sorry, starting a new um segment on this. Uh your one life hack or life strategy that really um has worked for you that, that people might benefit from, can you think of anything you want to pass along?
Yeah, this was great. Um I thought about this on the drive over and two things came up to mind. My first one was a wolf does not entertain the opinions of sheep. But we'll leave that one for later. I live in the now, not in the what ifs.
Hey.
So that's my thing. I live in the now because you just never know.
Yeah.
Right? So for me, every day I wake up and I gotta, I'm doing this today.
Yeah.
Right? I'm not, I don't worry about down the line. I don't worry about the what ifs.
Yeah.
So for me, I stay in the now and uh um I just stay in my lane. And I think, you know, for me, I don't uh, I don't uh, I don't stare away. I keep my circle very close, very tight.
Okay, um Ryan, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Always a pleasure, dude.